I'd like to open the meeting of the Carver Select Board for the March 2, 2021 Agenda. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which withstands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone like to read the community prayer?
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Is there anyone here wanting to participate in citizens' participation? Seeing no one moving to the microphone, the next item is Agricultural Commission, request to be appointed from alternate member to voting member, Megan Aruda. She did fill out an application.
I make a motion, we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend, Mr. Belvin. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving?
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say to Ms. Aruda, since she's not here especially, to thank you taking the time to fill out the application as thoroughly and thoughtfully as she did, because this is very helpful, especially when someone's not here. So, thank you very much, Ms. Aruda, wherever you are.
Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Well said. There's been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now, for a COVID-19 update on testing and vaccinations, we have the EMS Director, Mike Ryan, here to see us. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. In the handouts, we'll go over that in a minute. Just want to quickly go over as far as with vaccination. Testing is still ongoing. We do still have rapid antigen tests, test kits available for town employees, and also PCR testing. We haven't needed to do a lot lately. There hasn't been a lot of exposures. Have not been a lot of staff members who have presented with symptoms. So, that's kind of, as the numbers in town have dropped off, so hasn't the need for testing for our staff. So, we haven't really had a lot of testing going on recently. But there's still a lot of work for vaccinations. Just to give a quick background, back in around 2005, the state started pushing the development of local communities to have an emergency distribution site, vaccination plan in place. Each local community developed their own individual plans for providing those. Carver, of course, participated in that and developed the Carver Middle High School as their emergency vaccination location. It was work between the Health Department and Emergency Management at the time. Plan was approved by Department of Public Health Emergency Preparedness Planners, and every year, they'd come meet with the health agent, walk through the site, make sure it still met the requirements. So, that is the town's approved emergency distribution site that we've had, like you said, for over a decade now. The town, recently, we were able to join with Duxbury in order to provide vaccinations as part of Phase 1 for first responders, healthcare providers, other essential emergency workers. We were able to accomplish that. We actually were able to vaccinate 110 town employees between police, fire, EMS, emergency management dispatchers. They all were able to get the vaccination through that program. We are still registered with the mass COVID vaccination program and the Mass Immunization Information System. We've been with that, set up for that now for about a month. But like every other local community, we're having issues getting the vaccine. The doses are not available. We actually met recently, the Board of Health, EMS, and Emergency Management met with our emergency preparedness planners for the area, because there is a big push for drive-through programs. It's actually the new thing that they're looking at is drive-through vaccination sites. So, we met with them, and Mr. Borden from the Board of Health also was there with us, and their recommendation is to use the old fire station. It is unoccupied, so it's not, won't be in anybody's way. It can control the traffic flow off of 58 into the back parking lot behind, and then move people through the building and have them wait in the front parking area until their time has allotted after they've received the vaccine, to then go on their way. Having the planners approve this program with us actually will help us get the vaccine quicker, hopefully. But we, as you see, in that letter, in the packet, the first letter was from Secretary Sutter's date on February 17th, in which the state says that they are abandoning the pre-planning of local communities in lieu of regional. So, they're looking at mass vaccination sites for regional distribution. Biggest one, of course, being Gillette Stadium, which I know we've talked about before, Fenway Park, now they have the Natick Mall, Danvers, there's a lot of them. Unfortunately, anything south of Quincy is not covered. And we had a meeting today with Kingston. So, Kingston is looking to use the Kingston Mall. It's actually the old, they say the old JCPenney. For me, it's the old Michael, the old Jo-Ann's Fabric, K-1 Race Track. It's where they hold their town meetings. And it is big enough to hold it. The only problem that we're running into with that one is that it costs money, and they're going to be looking for towns who participate to put in money. When we asked how much, they didn't have a number. And the meeting today, hopefully, will get more information over the next couple of weeks, as far as what the cost will be to run that and how much each participating community will be asked to pay. But in the end, if they set up as a regional distribution site, such as Gillette or Fenway or any of these other mass vaccination sites, they can't turn anyone away. So, even if the town of Carver would say, "We don't want to participate," or "We don't want," they still would have to take residents from every town. They can't turn away. That's one of the things. But they are looking to try to do it as successful as possible. The more towns they have involved, of course, the easier it'd be to do it, using all the resources from the different communities. So, that's one. We're there. And then, the other letter in there is from the state senators and state reps who signed a letter to the secretary and the governor's office. I actually spoke with Representative Gifford, left the message to Senator Pacico, about this and the fact that for decades, we've been planning these distribution sites for pandemics, for mass vaccinations to be handled locally, so we can each handle our own communities. And then, they abandoned it for, of course, what they consider a better plan, which, you know, we all know isn't working that well. And they, you know, the Senator Gifford was very quickly to get back to me, saying, "Oh, no, they've been trying to push that point across." They did finally, they sent a letter, a couple of days after this letter came out, noting that, that they disagree with the decision, that it should be done more locally. Local boards of health should be, and even local health clinics and everything should be the location for the vaccine doses, not these large sites that are not nearby. So, currently, we don't really have that many options locally, except for, again, the small pharmacies. The Marshall Drive-Thru Clinic is available. It's not getting as many doses as it used to, and the state is also still not getting nearly enough doses as it needs. The State Housing Authority, through the Department of Public Health, is allocating doses for senior affordable housing. So, the Director of Carver Housing Authority has submitted a request for doses. I recently got an email saying that Carver's on the list, and that once they, once the Housing Authority gets approved, they will send the doses to the Town Board of Health for the purpose of vaccinating those in the Housing Authority. They, the email's very vague, and it's not committed, but they said that they could, we could see doses between March 8th and March 10th, but they'll let us know on March 5th, which is great. Thanks for letting us know a couple of days in advance. But either way, we do have a plan in place that if we do get the vaccine, if we do get the vaccine next week, we have 10 days to use it. The one thing that is a little disheartening is they're not, they're pushing that you use all the doses they give you for first doses. They don't want you holding on to any for second doses. Kind of goes against what I would like to do, but unfortunately, they're the ones who have control. So, if they say, they give us 100 doses, and we have 10 days to give out 100 doses, we'll get the, we'll get the doses out the best we can to them. So, again, we're still waiting for that dose. We also have to get those doses, if for some reason, if we get more doses for first dose, then we have needs for the Housing Authority. Our next priority is those who are mobility impaired. We have currently created a list. If anybody doesn't know if their name is on the list or not, they can reach out to the Board of Health or myself, and we'll make sure you get on the list of those who, residents who can't leave their homes and will need us to come see them. Currently, we have 17 residents. Some live together, but 17 residents on the list that said that they are mobility impaired, they can't leave the home to go to a doctor's office to get the vaccine or to sign up to one of these other locations. So, that's going there, too. So, we also say, you know, those who, I think we mentioned before that, those who are having issues getting the vaccine, scheduled appointments, or having a problem, you know, maybe navigating the internet, because it's definitely sometimes not the easiest thing to do, or don't have internet access, can call the library, and the library will assist them with internet access, first of all, but also if they haven't, maybe not too keen on navigating the system. The library staff is there to help them as well. They just ask, "Do you call first?" They don't want 20 people showing up at once for four computers. And they may have more than four, I'm choosing a number, but they, they just don't want everyone show up there and have to wait. And then, also, if they get inundated, they're going to reach out to myself and the health agent to see if we can go over and give them a hand on how to navigate it. Definitely not the easiest rollout. Again, our, our hope would be that they would maybe pull back on focusing on the large regional locations and look more towards the local communities, because the local communities were doing a good job, very successfully doing those at risk, especially as part of Phase 2, the first, the first level of Phase 2, the 75 and older. But they seem to abandon that this time. So, we are still working on it. We are hopeful that the state will eventually repeal their position that, that they don't want to do it to local communities and doing regionals. And if not, that they at least will give some attention to this area. Cape Cod really doesn't have much, anything over the bridge, doesn't have much for vaccination as far as regional. They are small locations, but they said Gillette's the biggest one, and there's some out in Springfield and the city, but, you know, anything south of, you know, what we call south of the 44 or even south of the 106 is really, doesn't have much available for regional, unless you want to travel at distance. We're continuing to work on it, the health, myself and the Board of Health, I have really made some strides in getting everything in place. But at the end of the day, it's every week we request doses, and every week we're told it's not available, again, because they're not sending it to local boards of health. The Housing Authority is a good, good opportunity, so we will be able to vaccinate those living in senior affordable housing. And if we have doses, they're, they're very specific when they say, "If we give you doses and you, more doses than you need, we still want you to use those doses in other avenues so they don't go to waste." So, that would be, our plan would be to, you know, if we know we have more doses, we'd earmark some for the mobile impaired, some for the Housing Authority, and then whatever's left over, we would open it up for people to schedule to come to the vaccination clinic. We're still waiting for the final paperwork approval for the drive-through program. So, for some reason, that wasn't done by next week or the week after, if we were to get these vaccine doses, then we would use the middle high school. We'd have to talk to the school, make sure that there were no events happening on the weekend, and use either a Saturday or Sunday when there was nothing going on there. But we're still waiting. It's, again, it's, you know, the email said, "You may," they bolded, underlined, "you may be receiving doses is between March 8th and March 10th." So, you know, it's kind of like, "You may," but we don't know if we will for sure. So, that's, unfortunately, the biggest news we have on the vaccine, the vaccine, it's, we're working on a regional plan. The biggest thing, and the biggest thing about the regional plan is, we're discussing is today, is it's great to open it up at Phase 2. The only problem is if you develop a regional distribution location like Gillette or like, if we did that in Kingston, it would have to stay open for all phases. So, which means the cost to run that would not just be for Phase 2 in these phases, it would also be for Phase 3. So, it's, it's a long, it's a long investment of time and money into that type of program. So, they, when that got brought up, because no one asked that question, it wasn't until the planners said today that, "No, no, you can't just do Phase 2, it's Phase 2 and 3." That caused a lot, a lot of questions to be asked, and a lot, a lot of, go back to the table, look at some numbers, and see what it's actually going to cost to run that program.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Lefan?
Yeah, if I could just ask Mike quickly, if the Kingston Mall location does seem to be coming to fruition, do you know what the timetable may be? And my second question is just to review exactly where we are in terms of, you mentioned Phase 2, but if you could maybe describe for the public what that means.
So, the timeline, they said, is a roughly, probably two-week turnaround time for when they get the application in. And when, they're trying to finalize the application now, with Kingston being the lead, kind of what Duxbury did.
Right.
But they're still waiting. They want to be able to say that these communities are on board, and so that might hold it up a couple of days, because every community said we need to know the numbers. You know, if you're going to expect X, Y, and Z amount of money from us to run this program every week or every month, we need to know what that cost is going to be so that we can, you know, see that, if there is going to be cost, if it's just going to be volunteers or, so there's still a lot of work. So, if they were to submit it by Friday, it's a two-week, probably about, they said roughly a two-week turnaround time for approval. So, we're not looking to, probably the end of March anyways. Right now, we're in Phase 2, Level 2, which is 65 and older, and those with two or more comorbidities. The next phase, opened up Phase 3, they haven't announced when that will be. But I would assume, it depends on the percentage of vaccinated, depending on how many people in Phase 2, Level 2, once they reach a certain percentage of those population vaccinated, they'll open the next level. The next level is a lot more broad. It's educators, it's agricultural, it's transit, it's sanitation, public works, there's a, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure, I would say would be a good point to say, infrastructure. And then, the last group, Phase, the last group of Phase 2, which is Level 4, is people with one comorbidity, regardless of their age. So, if they, so if you have asthma, you're VC, you have a cardiac issue. If you have one and you're 54 or 64, doesn't matter, as long as you have one comorbidity factor for COVID, you then meet the requirement for that part of Phase 2. And then, the last one, of course, and then after that's Phase 3, Phase 3 is general public. Anyone over the age of 18 for the Moderna vaccine, and anyone over the age of 16 for the Pfizer vaccine.
I have one question for you, Chief. Phase, Phase 2, Level 2, you said it's age 65 and two comorbidities?
Or.
Isn't it or?
Yep, or, yep. So, yeah, sorry. 65 plus, one group, and then the other group is anyone with two or more comorbidities. So, you don't have to have, they're not being too picky on the puzzle there. And the comorbidities, and the scary part about it is, that's the honor system. So, you go, you go up there and you say, "I have these two things," you know, "I have these three things." They're not looking for a doctor's note, they're not looking for, you know, so we're kind of holding people to the, to the honors program on this one. So, but yeah, don't go in and say that you, you weigh 110 pounds and say you suffered from obesity, you'll probably get turned away. But that's unfortunate, the part right now is there, and like I said, they're looking forward to, I'm looking forward to getting to Level 3 myself, because I think that will vaccinate a large amount of the population to maybe start to have some of the restrictions get lifted, especially when you start talking about vaccinating the school system. I already talked to Superintendent Neefan, there's about 280 staff members in the public school system that will need it, and we'll work with these school nurses to get that done as quickly as possible. And one of the easiest things about them is, that building is our EDS. So, we can say, "Okay, on Sa, okay, we're going to do this for two weekends in a row, Saturday and Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, sign up, you know, elementary school one day, high school the next day, elementary school, high school, and then see you all in four weeks, we'll do the same thing again, and get everyone done." Maybe we'll do it one weekend, but it depends on logistics, how many people we can get, how many actual doses we can get. But again, my, my biggest concern is, right now, is that we all get those doses and whether or not we'll get the second dose. And other communities have had that problem, aside the Chief of Arrows from Halifax, and, you know, they got, they did not get their second doses until this, I think it was this past week, they were two weeks late. So, and now, and now he can't get any first doses, because he was, they've all been trying. Hopefully, as you say, as, as the more people get vaccinated in this level, in this phase level, through the max vaccinate, the mass vaccination sites, hopefully, they'll start to trickle down, have more doses available for other locations. But I, I would hate to say, our best bet to have this area vaccinated, and not just our community, but the communities around us, is to do a regional site similar to what Kingston's proposing, and what, you know, Marshville's doing as a drive-in. The more you have, they're more likely to give them the doses then, you know, I can call them every day, they're not going to, they'll answer the phone and tell me they'll get back to me, and that's about it.
Does anyone from the board have any questions or comments? Mr. Townsend?
Thank you. Chief, I just want to thank you for advocating for as local an option as we can get with this, because I really think that it would help a lot with, with the distribution, if we could get a local distribution point. So, I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Belvin?
Did you? Thanks, Mike. Two things is, I appreciate everything you're doing, I really do, for our town. The other thing is, is that, wasn't there a group, if I remember correctly, a couple of years ago, that their main job was to try to elicit people to get into, what's it called? They're supposed to do this, the vaccines, they're supposed to distribute them, they're supposed to turn around and give them, they were trained people to do that.
Yep, that's Medical Reserve Corps.
Right.
Yep.
Where is that in relationship to?
They're available to us, they're available to everyone, too. The, the group in, the Medical Reserve Corps is actually who helped run Duxbury's clinic, and there's, they're a whole group of volunteers. Some, some of them are nurses, some aren't. So, it depends on, you can get, you can do, you can get them to help you run it, but there may not be enough people to run more than maybe two or three stations. So, any additional stations you'll have to cover. But with talking at Kingston, Kingston's looking to work with Self-Sure Health Services, Self-Sure Hospital, but Self-Sure Health Services to run their program and to run the whole thing, from having a physician on site, making sure that, you know, monitoring the storage of the vaccine, monitoring the distribution of it. They went, they went a little bit more further than the regional, the Regional Medical Corps, Reserve Medical Corps, sorry. But that is, they are available. I have her, I have the woman's number. If we were to look to, if all of a sudden, we got a large amount of vaccines and we wanted to vaccinate a lot of people, we could reach out to them, they would help set up everything. They have volunteers that help do screening, help do registration, help monitor, you know, people once they're done. So, they do have a lot, a lot of people that work in those clinics to help it. And they do have nurses, that volunteered nurses to do it. Just, they don't have a lot, that's the issue. They're, the corps, I don't want to say it's small, but they, they don't have a good group and a lot of nurses do it. I know that we do have a lot of nurses in town who voiced the, that they would be definitely willing to help volunteer to do this for us. And, you know, when we mentioned it during the meeting with Kingston, it really didn't go any, they, they'd already kind of made the agreement that their plan was to use, they're looking to vaccinate anywhere from 750 to 1,000 people a day through that clinic and through the location in Kingston. It's pretty impressive how much area there, I didn't know there was, I've been to that racetrack and didn't realize that without that racetrack, how much open square footage was in that area. So, there's definitely large enough that they could run probably 10 tables at a time. So, if you do 10-minute appointments, they're getting 60 people out of there easy. You know, yeah, 10 tables, 10 people every 10 minutes, if they even, they could even shorten it up. You know, you figure, you get people moving through, you come, you sit, you get your shot, "How you feeling?" "Go sit over there." It can be pretty quick. But yeah, the Reserve Medical Corps definitely is an option, especially for us. I just don't believe Kingston explored that option compared to Duxbury, which did, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much for the update.
Thanks, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Chief, for all your work. Appreciate it.
Hopefully, hopefully, we'll have some better news in the next couple of weeks and start doing some more work.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Our next item is a discussion and possible vote on the Conservation Commission Warrant Article Bylaw Amendment. Mr. Moore?
In, in 2019, we presented a Wetlands bylaw change, and for a number of reasons, it was not, not voted upon favorably at town meeting, so we've made a few changes to it. We identified the areas that we felt were problematic and have, for the most part, eliminated them. So, but in 2019, I did present in front of the Then Select Board, and this is our, I think it's part of your packet, this is a revised bylaw change for the Wetlands, and there are three new faces here that weren't here in 2019. So, I felt, I talked to Sarah, and Sarah suggested that I come in and go over this with you all. I can go through each of the changes if you'd like me to, or if you've looked at them, I can just answer any questions, whatever, whatever's simpler for you and easier for you to understand.
Why don't you go through them, each one briefly?
Okay. There aren't that many. If you start at page one, anything that we're changing is in red. So, on page one, what we just did under 9.212 is add invasive species to the list that falls under our purview. And that is either allowing people to remove invasive species if they're within our jurisdiction or preventing them from putting something there that may be considered invasive species if they were looking to do that. On page two, if you look at...
Mr. Moore, just a one second. Mr. Belvin, can we, can you write down your question?
Sure, I'll wait till after, okay.
Let's let him get through.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
All right. I can go do either way. All right. On page two, number three, this is, this is changing the definition of what, what is required or what a variance is needed for within the 65-feet no-touch buffer zone. And basically, what it is, is it uses the exact language that is in the state guidelines for the 100-foot buffer zone that requires just the Conservation Commission's permission. So, we're taking the same language from the 100-foot, 100-foot permission and putting it within the 65-foot variance, just to kind of make it so that they both match. And, and that's going to make it a little bit easier for people to understand exactly what they can and can't do. And, and for people who have a project that may, may go between both the 65 and the 100-foot, it'll make it easier for them to understand what can and can't be done. So, I think it just, it, it simplifies it and, and makes it easier for, for people to move ahead. Number four on that is, we added, we added more to the definition. It says that, the law originally said that "no person shall build any residential dwelling within 100 feet of a cranberry bog." That's what our bylaw was. And the commission has decided that we feel that, that we can add, "unless the residents and the bog are on the same parcel of land under singular ownership and will remain as such in perpetuity." Our feeling there is that if somebody has, wants to build something within this 100 feet of a bog... Number four on that is, we added, we added more to the definition. It says that, the law originally said that no person shall build any residential dwelling within 100 feet of a cranberry bog. That's what our bylaw was. And the commission has decided that we feel that, that we can add unless the residents and the bog are on the same parcel of land under singular ownership and will remain as such in perpetuity. Our feeling there is that if somebody has, wants to build something within this 100 feet of a bog and they are going to own the bog, that there's some stewardship there, that, that they're going to maintain the bog and that they, they care about the wetlands portion of that. So that we would be more willing to allow them to do something, but it would, the order of conditions would require that the bog and that, that structure remain under single ownership forever. If you go to page three, the top of page three, number five is basically just in addition to the exceptions to our bylaw. And this basically just says, this bylaw shall not apply to the normal maintenance or improvement of land in agricultural use as set forth. One of the issues that we had in 2019 was that the growers felt that we were being a little bit, there was too much gray areas, what they could or couldn't do. So this basically puts it in writing that if, if they're doing maintenance or, or improvement of land that's already in 61A, that, then they can pretty much go ahead and do it. On page four, there is a chart of, of new, new fees associated with, with people coming in front of us. And those fees are based on statewide fees that are, are done by other locales. And number six, this is, this is just a change in how people put the public notice in the newspaper and how it gets paid for. And this is townwide. This has it for every legal notice that goes into the paper. So we're just matching what the town says for other departments. And there's not, then there's not much after this. There's, I don't have my pages numbered, I think it's page eight, under section 9.2.3.3. Under the site plan, we ask that, that the engineers put the setback lines, the zoning setback lines, on, onto the plan so we can see where, where the, whatever structure or whatever they want to do is in relationship to adjoining properties.
Sorry, did you say the zoning setback lines?
I believe it's, I believe that's what it is.
Okay.
I think, I can't think of any other setback lines that, that would be there, but I believe that's, that's what it is. And then, moving forward to the end, if you go under definitions, 9.2.5, on the second page of definitions, the fourth bullet down, we added walls to the things that are, are not allowed, driving of piles, erection or repair of buildings, walls, or structures of any kind. That is under the definition of alter. The next one is placing of obstructions or permanent objects or structures in the water. We added the word permanent because there are quite a few people who have temporary docks that they put in the water. And, you know, as long as they pull them out in the fall, it's not, it's not really an issue to us, so we wanted to put the word permanent. The, the next bullet is the destruction of plant life, including the cutting of trees. And we wanted to add shrubs, flowers, or grasses. And that goes in line with the Massachusetts General Law Definition of Vista Pruning, which I've added at the end of this, and which you'll see. So that just basically means that, you know, you can't cut trees, but you really can't cut a lot of the stuff underneath the trees either. So we wanted that to be there. And again, the, the next bullet, the introduction of non-native grasses, shrubs, trees, or other plantings, is just a reiteration of the invasive species part that we had earlier. Under variants, we just changed the language from what was struck there to, to with respect to any requirement or prohibition of this bylaw. It's, this is basically legal verbiage that we went through KP Law in 2019, and he, they, they kind of just said that that's a little bit better wording for what it is we're trying to accomplish here. If you go to the last page, in red, it says, "Especially affecting such land but not generally affecting wetlands within the town, that no reasonable conditions, alternatives or alternatives exist which would allow the project to proceed in compliance with the bylaw." We have a lot of situations where people come in front of us, where, where they, they just, there's something that they want to do and it really infringes on the wetlands. And we, we ask them to go back and look at it with a different set of eyes, and see if there's a way they can skew a building or move something just a little bit to protect the wetlands a little bit more. And we ask them to really look and, and make sure that there are no other alternatives before they come back to us. It's, you know, we try to negotiate, we try to do everything in, in good faith and help these people out. But we ask them, and this is asking them in turn to do their due diligence to try to be at least intrusive into the wetlands. So we just wanted to have that in the bylaw. And also, the, the next, the next section in red that says that this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant insofar as the property cannot be put to any beneficial use without the granting of a variance, or that the work is necessary to prevent a threat to persons or property. This again is, is something that KP Law suggested we put in here. And it, it basically, it goes hand in hand with the trying to, trying to come up with the alternatives that, that protect the wetlands. And then the last thing is the vista pruning, the definition of vista pruning. This is pulled directly from state law. That, that's the exact quote of state law, but it's, it, people don't know it exists. So I, I figured that when I was working with the group on this, that if we put it in the Carver bylaws, people would be more likely to see it. And, and we have to enforce this anyway, and a lot of times that it, it comes to our attention after the fact, and people didn't know that this, this existed. So we want to make sure it's in our bylaws so that they, hopefully we'll have a chance to see it. And again, in this, in this definition, vista pruning does not include the cutting of trees, which will reduce the leaf shade canopy to less than 90%. So that basically says, within the wetlands, you can only cut one out of 10 trees if they're all the same size approximately. And does not include the mowing or removal of understory brush. And that's, that goes back to the changes we made in the definition of alter, to include shrubs, grasses, and bushes, things like that. So those are the, those are the changes that we're, we're suggesting to go on the town warrant this, this year. And I believe in 2019, the select board did vote on it, and, and on our, our proposal so that at town meeting, it was, it was recorded as a, as a vote of the select board. So that's what I'm looking for now. We do have a placeholder in the town warrant, so it's, we're just needing, we just need the approval and, and, and in it goes. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Belvin, you had something?
Yeah, I got a couple, actually. So we'll start with this first one here, invasive species.
Yes.
Is there a list of invasive species, and is it located on our website, that people will be able to say, because having invasive species here is one thing, but you need to have a list to say, all right, these are the invasive species and whatnot that we are not allowing?
There is a website, it's, it's initials is IPANE, I-P-A-N-E, and it stands for invasive plant and animals, invasive species, plants and animals of New England, something like that. But the, the initials are IPANE.
Right.
And it's got them all.
Yeah. When I was on the invasive species task force that Stephen Cole had done a couple of years ago, we were, each, each of the members was given a book of the invasive species. So it's, the list is awfully, awfully long.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is we have to, we should at least provide something to our residents to say, this is where you need to go to find.
Well, then I think that we do the, the website.
Okay. That's the first one. Did anyone else have anything on that, or?
No.
My, my second one is on the second page there.
Yes.
And my question is this, is that it doesn't say anything in here for property owners that, like me, abut a bog within the 600 and 100-foot barrier, all right, for general maintenance, that we're allowed to provide general maintenance of our property, whether it's mowing our lawn, planting plants, or shrubs around my property, or my garden. I mean, if you look at this bylaw, it turns around and says, I, anything I would do on my property, I have to go back to the Conservation Commission and say, well, can I plant a shrub today? Can I do that? Can I put my garden up this year, or can't I? So, I mean, there's nothing in here that says that if you have a property that's already there and maintained, and that, that property, you have the legal right to plant grass around your house that's already there, you can plant shrubs around your property without going to the Conservation Commission, that if you want to plant a tree on your property, that you can plant a tree without having to go to the Conservation Commission. There's nothing in here that says that you can do that.
If you go to the bottom of page one, under statement of jurisdiction, bullet number one, except as permitted by the commission, as provided by this bylaw, no person shall remove, fill, et cetera. That is the state law. So actually, the question that you're asking is, do you need to come to the Conservation Commission to alter within 100 feet of a wetland? The answer is yes, you do, and that's state law. That's not a Carver bylaw. That is the state law, that within 100 feet, you need our permission. So to, to plant shrubs, to plant trees within 100 feet of a wetland, yes, you do need our permission, and you do need to come in front of us. And that is state law. That is not a Carver bylaw.
But I believe that something like mowing your lawn, or anything that was already there?
Yes, if things are grandfathered in.
Pre-exist this bylaw.
It falls under the state definition of alter. Mowing a lawn isn't really altering if the lawn's there. But if you want to pull out 20 or 30 square feet of, of shrubs and put in a lawn, that's altering. Planting a tree is altering. So that would require a resident to come in front of the Conservation Commission, and that's a state law.
So is there a way for the town to go ahead and, anybody that's into this, within the 100-foot or 65-foot barrier that already has existing stuff on their properties at this time, that everything that they do to maintain that, all right, can be allowed to do that without having to go ahead and put in a request, because you also have fees that associate with going and asking for this stuff to be done?
You don't necessarily have fees. You can come before us and say, do we have to report this? And if it's minor, then, then we would probably say, no, you're fine in doing that. But it's, it, it is state law that we have to know about it. But maintaining something that's already there is different than altering something that's already there. So maintaining a lawn, maintaining your shrubs, and maintaining your, your garden is, is, is different than going in and building one or planting things from, that aren't there.
But it says planting, and if I'm gonna use my garden, then I gotta plant.
But, Mr. Belvin, if the garden is pre-existing and you're putting in new bulbs this spring, that's not what he's talking about, if it's pre-existing.
But if it's not pre-existing, though, that's, that's what I'm saying, is the plants themselves aren't pre-existing.
So I think he's answered your question. You go in front of them, you get on the agenda, you tell them what you want to do, and then they tell you, no, you don't worry about it. And that doesn't cost you any money. I think that was what you said.
Yes, well, yes.
I think we need to move on, Bob, because we have to get through this.
All right, let's go to the next one. Number five on, again, why isn't that for residential? You allow it for maintenance and improvement of land for agricultural use, but you don't allow it for residential?
That's because under 310 CMR 10.04, it is, those are the agricultural exemptions. And actually, to that point, I was gonna suggest that you say not just 310 CMR 10.00, but the very specific, it's 10-point, 10.04 is really long section, and it's all agriculture. And it includes all kinds of agriculture, not just cranberries. So just to let people know, it, because that's the whole, those are the whole regulations.
Yes.
But not all the regulations are the agricultural exemptions.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I would, I mean, that's just my thought on that.
All right, next one is on 9.2.21. $75, why has it gone from 35 to 75? What administrative costs of this, is this increase coming from?
This, the answer to that is that these were costs that were changed two years ago, and I believe they were done based on, on statewide guidance. And in this particular case, we're matching the bylaw to what we're already charging.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, so you're, you've increased it even though the bylaw says it's 35?
Yes. It, it was, it was increased.
I'm just putting that out there.
I think, I believe, and I'm not 100% sure, I believe it was changed about two years ago, two or three years ago. And it was based on state guidance to do so.
All right. Next one, he says, insert chart. We don't have that chart. If we don't have the chart, we can't be, and this one's on, well, there's actually two different places there's chart. Notice of intent, it has insert chart, and there's another spot that had insert chart too, and we don't have a chart.
Elaine has the charts.
Okay, so, I mean, can't vote on something if you don't have a chart. That goes with, because I'm not gonna vote on it.
Okay, is that it, Mr. Belvin?
Mm-hmm. I'm just going through my last ones here. What is it?
Okay, while you're looking, I, I don't want to take up a lot of time.
No, that's fine. The last one is the 14 on 9233. Again, it has a chart, insert chart here for setback, so we know what that is. We don't have that. Again, on the second to last page, where it says shrubs, flowers, grasses, again, I have that thing about residential, you already have it, you're allowed to, people should know that you do have the right to do that. And again, is there a list of non-invasive grasses, shrubs, trees, or other plantings? Do we have a list of that available to the public?
We can, we can put the, we can put the website in on, on the town page, and the bullet before that is the, is the destruction of plant life. It's not the alteration. It's under the definition of alter, but it's destruction of plant life, including the cutting of trees, shrubs, flowers, and grasses.
Okay. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any comments, questions? Mrs. Bogart?
There's just one thing kind of sitting wrong with me, and it's the use of the term beneficial use. To me, that's just so subjective. What's beneficial to me may not be beneficial to you. I'm on the last page.
Yeah, I know where you, I know where you are.
So it's, I mean, that's just so open-ended, subjective. That just doesn't sit well with me. I mean, as I've made, I don't like open-ended subjectiveness, so I don't know how that can be changed or kind of specified more, but beneficial use is just...
It's, it's really, the word beneficial is going back to the, to the applicant and what they're trying to get done. It, it really is benefit to the applicant in their exact proposal. So that's the beneficial use. If we grant the variance, that's the beneficial use. They get to do what they'd like to do.
But what if someone says, well, I can't do this, it's a, it's a benefit to me to do this, but in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's not great for the town, or the abutter, or someone else. Like, of course, an applicant's gonna come before the board to get something for their benefit, but...
Right.
I, I can come, well, you know what, I, I can't use that otherwise, and let me, unless you let me do this. Well, of course. So, so where can the, the commission say, well, no, sorry? Because then the applicant, well, I can't do anything else beneficial with this. So it's just, I, that's just a little too subjective for my liking.
Basically, what it, it allows is for, it, it's almost like a hardship, that, that the, that a variance would be, would be granted if there was no other option.
Yeah, and I, well, and I see that in the, the line before. It's just the phrase beneficial use, it's just unsettling to me. I'm just not comfortable with it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Bogart. Real quick, Savvy, just a couple of things that I think might be helpful.
Yeah.
On page two, where you've crossed out a permit and replaced it with an order of conditions, I can guarantee you, the reason, no one is going to know what an order of conditions is. And, and being that it's a fancy word for permit, I just wanted to suggest that you leave the word permit, a permit in there, add a comma, and then order of conditions, comma, because that's what an order of conditions is. And if, anyway, just for clarity.
Okay.
At the bottom of that paragraph, where you say, unless the residents and the bog are on the same parcel of land under singular ownership, I think you're going to encounter there that sometimes a bog owner's house is on one parcel, and his bog is on the one and his bog is on the one next to it. And so you might be better off, be better served, if it's the residents and the bog are under singular ownership and just skip the parcel thing. Just a helpful hint. And on page one, where you have endangered invasive species.
Yes.
I was going to suggest you put an asterisk, and at the bottom, in a footnote, list that I-Pain website.
Okay.
On page three, real quick, at the top. I... Oh, I've already told you that. Instead of just...
10.04.
Doing the whole 10.00, I would be specific to the agricultural exemptions in 10.04. Real quick, under... What's this section? Site plan, number 14. You said the setback lines refer to zoning setback lines?
I believe so.
Well, you might want to be sure, and if it is, then add the word zoning, because that's not really clear right now.
I don't know if Elaine's... Elaine had the charts. I thought they would be in your packet.
Well, that's okay. Just for your... Just so you know that I think that makes it clear.
Okay.
And under the definition section, when you added shrubs, flowers, or grasses, you might want to just add where they are.
I don't quite understand what you mean.
Where can't you cut flowers, shrubs, or grasses?
This is under the definition of alter. So in the earlier parts, you cannot alter within 65 feet without a variance, and you cannot alter within 100 feet without our permission.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted that to be clear. Thanks, Elaine. All right, now we have the charts and checklists.
Thank you.
I just... Just for your edification, for the board's edification, this original checklist was made up back in... Many years ago, by yours truly. It's been the same for quite some time and was meant to be there for clarification purposes, really.
Elaine, can I take a quick look at the charts? I don't have them with mine either, because Brooke sent them to you, and I didn't get them. All right, thanks.
And obviously, the BRP Wetlands Protection Act, Form 3, is the notice of intent, which is a permit application. And those are state fees, just so people know. Those are not set by the commission. And I should further add that, for example, work on a single family lot, if you're putting on an addition, that $110, most of it goes to the state, and some of it goes to the town, so...
So can I ask a question?
Mr. Belbin. If it's quick. Trying to keep moving here.
Well, we just got these. So I just want to make it clear what the costs are. So it's the $110 fee here, just in category one. It's a $75 fee for the town, correct?
Yes.
All right, and then it's notification of the papers is a separate fee.
That's correct.
That's been in place for 20, more than 20 years.
Right, but some people that are listening to this, that they don't know this. So I want to make sure it's clear to everyone that this is what we're looking at for fees. Are there any other...
And I wanted to make it clear that those are not new fees. That's my only point. Please continue.
Are there any other fees associated with someone coming to your committee in a category one? I'm just saying category one here, except for those ones. It's that 110, the 75, and the newspaper fee. That would be everything.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Anyone else?
And one last thing here.
Yes, Mr. Belbin.
On this other checklist, so you said that it's going to be the zoning setbacks?
Yeah, I don't see this on here. This is a...
Right, it's not on... Is that going to be added? Is that the intent, is it added to this?
I will check with Brooke. Brooke asked that I add the setback lines, and she said it was on this checklist.
Yeah.
And I'm not seeing it.
Right, so, I mean, that would be good. That would be good on your...
If they match.
That everything comes in and says, okay, we have this.
Yeah. Yeah, so either it'll be added to this or taken off the other.
Okay.
They'll match.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Do we have some like to make a motion on this bylaw? Conservation, wetlands, local wetlands bylaw amendment? It's being proposed for town meeting. No one wants to make a motion?
Are there necessary changes there to be made before we could vote on that?
I... So is everyone wanting to wait until the changes are made? Is that what you're saying?
I feel more comfortable doing that.
Okay. We can vote at the next meeting. That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Savvy.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'll get these to you right away.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of possible vote. Chapter three of our town bylaws, the town administrator bylaw. I believe we went through that extensively last time. So maybe we don't need to go through it extensively this time.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Townsend?
I think at the last meeting, we held off voting because we were going to have the rewritten bylaw, as we discussed, sent out to us in advance so we could review it. But I don't think we ever got it.
Yeah, you know, I don't recall either. I'm willing to put this off again.
I hate to put something off for another meeting, but I would like to put this off till we have a chance to just read it as it's written.
Is that a motion to table?
Yes.
Is there a second to table this item?
Second.
Thank you, folks. Motion and a second is on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor of tabling this item?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Town administrator update?
I'm sorry, I was...
I'm sorry.
Gazed in conversation here, so...
I beg your pardon.
Yes. I'm sorry, a couple of things this evening. First of all, our usual CARES Act update. We do have a reimbursement request going in this week for about $59,000. That was actually a piece that was held off from the last submission, so it doesn't change the dynamics of what I already mentioned to you. And I think it was interesting that Mike Ryan, the chief, brought this to our attention about this possible Kingston endeavor. And again, it raises the... Once again, the question as to how much capacity we should be keeping as we learn more and more about what our needs might be. So needless to say, we'll keep our eye on that. It's still a little bit frustrating in terms of the turnaround by the county. We do have, I'm aware that we have at least two of our applications, of our outstanding four applications are in, I think, Phase 2B. So it is a very, very close audit by the county. So that being said, I can't be critical, because I know the backlog they have, and I know how intensive their scrutiny is. So the money will come. The money will come. Fortunately, it's not a situation that keeps us from doing anything. It just replenishes our coffers, so... The other... Last evening, the finance committee finished its deliberations in terms of meeting with departments. Last night, we met with the school committee. They also discussed the regional vote tech budget and the capital plan. So I think, actually, no, I'm aware that we're in very good shape now, prepared for town meeting. However, there is a need for the finance committee to meet with the board to discuss their recommendations to the board. And they're suggesting Wednesday, March 10th. That's a week from tomorrow night. Obviously, it's a... We need a location, presumably the high school, that can actually fit everybody in the room, as well as any department heads that may wish to attend. So that's the technical piece, but the... I guess the large piece, the larger piece is, again, how we're very pleased that, you know, this was kind of a difficult, very, very tight process. The cooperation with the school department was, you know, as excellent as you would expect in this town. And at this point, we're also planning on restoring the $220,000 that we used from stabilization last year. That was one of the pieces that we really weren't sure if we were going to be able to do. However, I was very pleased that we all made it somewhat of a priority. Even our school department made it somewhat of a priority, so... So we will at least, I want to say, back where we started. It's never quite like that. But I think we're in a very good position, and I have both the town administrator and the FinCom budget recommendation to this board and town meeting is going to be the same, as you would expect. It's been a lot of give and take. We've worked very closely, particularly with the chair and the vice chair between meetings, to try and make sure that, you know, we were on the same page, same understanding of various departments and issues facing the town that we had to be ready for. So if you could maybe check your schedules, and as soon as you can confirm with me, that would be helpful, because if we need to find another date, then we need to start working on it quickly. And we have one of the ongoing projects that... These are the things that oftentimes are going on in the background, you know, for better or for worse. But the town is just closed out. Elaine facilitated this project with our O&amp;M department, the streetlight retrofit grant. And this is an award back in 2019 to replace our 573 lights with LED lights. This is a multifaceted program. Number one, you know, there's a contracting phase, an audit phase, which takes some time and some expense. And ultimately, the closeout last October allows the town to remain competitive for Green Communities Act funding, which, after the designation grant period, it's competitive. So in order to meet certain goals and timelines, closing out this project on time, actually a little early, is very helpful. It allows us to get into the next round of competitive grants. And this was a $157,000 project, of which the town only paid $100,000 because, due to incentives from EverSource and... And, I'm sorry, I want to call it Metco. It's not M-A-P-C. So the town only spent about $100,000, which may seem like a lot of money on one hand. On the other hand, these projects pay back between, within three to five years. I think this is probably on track to pay itself back within four years. So it is a long-term savings, which comes in very handy right now, because we will have some electrical and other utility cost increases with our new police station. So at least for budgeting purposes this year, we're keeping our utilities pretty close to what they were for FY, the current fiscal year. Faint of notes regarding that. So, as I said, it's closed out. We're in good position with our Green Communities targets and future grants. Lot of work over a long period of time, so congratulate Elaine and our O&amp;M people for their efforts. And you have a synopsis in your packet, which is a little more in-depth than what I told you, but I think it's good for the public to hear. One other piece, something that's recurring. Next week, I think it's Monday, we will be opening our bids on the North Carver Plymouth Street waterline extension. It would be nice to tell you that I knew what the costs are going to be at the moment. So next Monday's going to be a very interesting day. We did discuss a little bit last night at the finance committee meeting. Actually, it was the chair and the vice chair and me after the meeting, so not in a quorum situation. But just kind of brainstorming the different options we may have in terms of financing this. I think there's at least an uneasy consensus that we're probably looking at some sort of mid-to-long-term bond authorization. As always, depends on the cost, that may have to be paid for through either short-term, long-term, with the principal and interest coming out of our stabilization fund. Certainly not anything that we would possibly be seeking additional funds or override money for. But until we have those numbers, then we're not going to be in a position to really make a recommendation. It's my assessment at the moment, though, when we get into bonding, usually bond payments aren't due until after the project. It'd be short-term borrowing a project. And ultimately, once the project is closed out, that's when you would bond for long-term, because you know what it costs. So it usually takes about a year before you're actually in a position of having to pay debt service, principal and interest. So this isn't something that should impact our capital plan for FY 2022. Probably something that we'd be looking at for FY 2023. That's just, right now, that's my guess as to how we'd probably be moving forward. Obviously, we continue to coordinate closely with the finance committee and our finance director to provide options as this goes forward. One other piece that I would like to mention with regard to this. I do have a draft, well, not a draft, a public statements that I would like to make, and I've given correspondent a copy of this, too. There have been, and I'm just going to read, so rather than paraphrase, but... "Recently, there have been erroneous statements posted on social media stating that the water supplied by the North Carver Water District has not been tested in seven years. This is not true. As these comments may cause water customers to worry unnecessarily and falsely believe that we have a public health issue, I feel compelled to inform this board and the citizens of Carver that this is not accurate information. Be assured that the North Carver Water District is mandated by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection to sample all our public water supplies according to the drinking water sample schedules issued and monitored by MADEP." That's, again, that's MAS-DEP, Environmental Protection. "We collect all required drinking water samples, have them tested and analyzed by Massachusetts Certified Water Testing Laboratories, and then report all these results to the MADEP in a timely manner as required. Additionally, these testing results are summarized and reported on or before July 1 every year in the annual consumer confidence report as required by the federal EPA. This CCR is sent to all water consumers, border health, MADEP, and is also posted on the town's website. The North Carver Water District has been and remains in compliance with all state and federal drinking water requirements and regulations, and is therefore considered safe to drink according to these same requirements and regulations." As I said, if I didn't feel this was a possible public health issue, probably wouldn't be even mentioning this this evening. One other item that came up has been mentioned to me by a member, members of the board. Is any confusion over comment I made at the last meeting? And I'd like to, I had written a quick comment here, too, that "In light of public comments regarding the testing of 19 private wells in the Plymouth Street vicinity, be aware that the town's consulting engineer has reported that the most recent round of testing demonstrates no changes from the prior round. There are no additional detections for any of the tested parameters during this round within the required testing area. If anybody requires further testing details, please feel free to contact my office or the health agent." Any questions on any of that? I just want to make sure that...
Mr. Lefan, I just wanted to make it clear. So what you said last time was that there were no new detections, and now you're saying there are no additional detections. But same difference, is that right? Just wanted to make that clear.
Yes, I just want to make sure it's clear that we're basically in a status quo situation, which I consider healthy under the circumstances. So again, any questions, any of us? Please...
Thank you, Mr. Lefan. Mr. Belbin?
I think you also, at the last meeting that we did have, you also turned around and also did that little statement afterwards, says, I'm no expert here. And you leave it up to the experts. And I want to say that thank you very much for saying that, because you really turned around and showed that you're not an expert in water. And you made it clear to all of us that you're not, and this is the information that we were given by the water. So I want to... But you know that I heard that. I understand that.
No, I appreciate that, because sometimes we all held responsible for what we do in... I appreciate that, because sometimes we all held responsible for what we do and what we say in this environment, but I do think it's important for us to know what we don't know.
Right.
And I think we have, we have good people working for us, and we rely on those people, as we have really great people working with the district, the, the water operator, the, you know, the company that they work for, and of course, internally, our, our professionals, Dave and John. So, so yes, knowing what you don't know is important, Bob. I appreciate you pointing that out.
Right. My other one is that, was dioxin 1.5, 1.4 tested in our-
Yeah, they tested it.
-water sample? Is that a typical thing that they are to test through our water sub?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's on, it's on the DEP website, the whole list of things, when they publish what wells were tested, and, and it comes to us in that report as well. It's always on there.
Right, I just wanted, like I said, that is tested, and I want to make sure that people understand that. That one chemical that we have the issue with the North Carver, it's tested, and we're-
And if anybody, if anybody wishes to be sent a summary of, of the testing results, the, the summary reports that detail all that, I'll be happy to send those out to anybody who wishes to see them.
As a public disclaimer, I'm in between the two. The North Carver and also the well. So, I'm in between that. So, that's very important to me.
Thank you. No, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Anyone else? Mr. Hoffman?
Just to confirm, Rick, the three wells that were in question, those were not, those were, there was no changes from the prior round, meaning those were identified in an earlier round?
That is correct. That is correct.
So, that's where the misinformation was?
That was, that is where I think there was a, yeah, misconception.
So, it's not additional? That's always been, those three were always, were identified earlier?
That is correct.
Just in the last round, they were.
That's right. And this is where I almost hesitate once again, but speaking to the consulting engineer, he has, in his analysis, he concludes that, that those are actually, you know, even, they're, they're testing even better than they were before, but they're still not in a, but they're still under a certain condition that, as they worked three months ago, the last round of testing, so. So, the news is a little bit better than it was before, but effectively, it's in the same, same state as it was.
Very, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Lefan.
And a couple of brief things that aren't here. I think, again, the good stuff, and if I could find my notes on. I think I, I know I did. I believe I sent the Board some, some pictures of some of the work going down at the COA, some facelift activities in the dining area, the main gathering area, which you're all familiar with. Some of those pictures are actually very impressive, the flooring, the ceiling, the walls are being painted. And I did ask our Director, COA Director Connie, when a good time would be to go down, you know, for a reception, and, you know, more than just me popping down there, and she, she really wants to finish those walls first. She wants a finished product, so, but her initiative is really impressive, and so I want to, at least in this forum, to congratulate her. And this has been a difficult time for, for all of us, certainly our seniors, and, but trying to take advantage of this time, when the, when the building is, is not being utilized, to, to try and make some progress, I think is really, I really want to congratulate her on doing that. And I think that's, that's all I have this evening.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lefan. The next item is minutes, licenses, topics not recently anticipated by the Chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 16th, 2021, and I believe you all have copies of the minutes from February 2nd, 21, and February 16th, 2021. Would anyone like to make a motion on those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 16th.
A second.
So, you're not, you're not bundling them?
Can we do that?
You, you can. People usually tend to vote separately, but you could bundle them if there's no opposition.
Let's do both of them.
Okay.
February 2nd and February 16th.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of February 2nd, 21, and February 16, 21? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Request to use Shirliff Park, the Carver Farmers Market, Sundays from June 13th through October 31st, 2021?
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Select Board Community Announcements. Any, Mr. Belbin?
Yeah, I just want to let public know, if you don't know now, that the Mass Division of Fish and Wildlife are starting to increase fees this year. They haven't increased them in many, many years. The problem is, is that those fees are substantial jump, and it could be a hardship on some of our residents. So, if you're interested in making a comment, please go to the Division of Fish and Wildlife website, and they will turn around and take your comments there, online. And I can't wait for the Farmers Market to go open up. Thank you.
And you will notice, Bob, we did remove those stumps as you requested last, after last season. I don't know if you've been over there, but we, we took care of that for you.
Over there, yes.
Anyone? Mr. Hoffman?
I just want to bring up that the Seventh Annual Kane Strong Golf Outing will be held May 15th at Bay Point Country Club again, so the, I'm happy to, to report that the golf portion is sold out. We sold out in three days, the quickest we've ever done that. So, I was just looking for whole sponsors and raffle prizes, so. Want to thank everybody in the community for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Anyone else? Okay. And I also just wanted to point out that the Farmers Market this year will not be having to pay a fee to the town. They will be charging their own fees, which pay for the pony rides and base painting and things like that. So, Select Board Notes, Mrs. Bogart, I believe you had the only one this time?
Yeah, it just kind of goes back to us talking about Chapter 3 of the bylaws. I think it's important that we start to have the discussion and start the planning process of hiring a full-time town administrator. We've been in an interim role for a while.
Permanent.
So, so, I think we need to start discussing how we're going to do it. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bell-
Can we have this on the next agenda?
Well, that was the, that was the plan.
Hmm?
That was the plan, since it's on this as a Select Board Notes.
I just want to make sure it is, because I asked the same thing.
And now it's time for executive session?
Yeah, I just want to remind the Board-
Mr. Lefan?
I know your next regular schedule meeting is, is the 16th, but I do need you to look at your schedules and confirm that you're available on the 10th for the budget, budget meeting, so.
Right, thank you. Our next item is an executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions, police union, that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held in open session, and to reconvene in open session.
Only to adjourn, correct? Or is it to actually?
I think that's-
No, we have, we have another-
I think that's up to the Board. I think it's possible you maybe choose to vote something.
The next item is discussion and possible vote of the memorandum of understanding with the union. So, okay, this needs to be a roll call vote, Mr. Belbin?
Does there a motion?
Robert Belbin says aye.
Well, would somebody need to make the motion?
Yeah, I was going to say.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes. Will the Cable Access Channel be here to, when we come back into open session, or not?
We will ask the Cable Access Channel to be here when we come back in open session. He's, he is saying that he will be. Thank you, sir. There has been a motion and a second to go into executive session for the purpose stated. Mr. Belbin?
Robert Belbin says aye.
Mrs. Bogart?
Ms. Bogart says aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Mr. Hoffman says aye.
Mr. Townsend?
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewen says aye. Thank you. We are now in executive session. We hope not to take too long. Um, sir, in the back. Thank you. We are back, we reconvened into open session from executive session, and our final topic is a discussion of possible vote, police union memorandum of, of agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, will you approve this agreement?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the police union memorandum of agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. That's 401, to approve. Thank you all very much. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
And I will-